All right, it is ten o'clock. So we'll go ahead and get the meeting fired up this morning. Wednesday, November sixth. Thank you, everyone, for coming. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda that we have in front of us.
Move to approve agendas printed?
Second. I move to second. Any further discussion? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Approval of last week's minutes.
I make a motion to approve last week's minutes.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion on those minutes? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And then approval of claims for payment.
Move to approve claims for payment?
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion on that? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The claims for payment are approved. We have the auditor's monthly report in front of us.
I make a motion to approve the auditor's monthly report.
I will second.
I move to second that we approve the auditor's report. Is there any questions on that? If not, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries. Item six is Tam Ellerding here for a proclamation.
Hi, yes.
Just ran in the door at the right time, didn't she?
Yes, I did. Well, that clock's fast because the bell was just ringing.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for having us. November is philanthropy month, and so the Harden County Community Endowment Foundation is partnered with the Ellsworth Municipal Hospital and with the Ellsworth College, Community College, and we would like to have a proclamation to have you sign. I forgot my glasses. Kelly, do you want to read this for me? That's on the spot. This is Kelly Knott. She's the person in charge of the foundation at the hospital.
Okay.
Okay, so proclamation in recognition and support of philanthropy month in Harden County, whereas local foundations in Harden County are a valuable resource for people who desire to support causes close to their hearts in their own county, whereas local foundations in Harden County provide structure for supporters to give their resources, including time, talents, and financial support, to better communities in which they and others live and work. Whereas local foundations in Harden County strive to impact nearly every citizen in one way or another by assisting in the quest to provide quality health care, primary, secondary, and post-secondary education of youth in our public and private schools, continuing education of our young and older adults, social services, and food banks, fine arts, natural resource conservation, tourism, and quality of life opportunities. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Harden County Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November as philanthropy month in Harden County and invite citizens to join in giving back, getting connected, and building a better community through personal involvement in our local foundations, serving the citizens in Harden Counties. So proclaim the sixth day of November 2013.
And I have several copies because I thought if you sign all of them, then we get to take one back and have one on display here. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. And this is Caitlin Bartlett. She represents the Ellsworth Community College.
Welcome.
So, and we have some of these table tents we'd like to put around the courthouse if we could.
Sure.
It talks about foundations.
You bet.
And I have to do a little, you know, gift of grain. I have a couple farmers around here. You're not a farmer, are you?
Not today.
Not today. I want to give you this so you can think about that, too.
Okay.
So we'll put several of those table tents around. Hi, yeah, can we do a photo? Can we take time for a photo?
Yeah, thanks, we sure can.
Okay.
Do we want to go ahead? Let's go ahead first and get a motion to make this proclamation for the month of November.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. I move to second it. Is there any further discussion on that? We do thank you for all the work that you do do in Harden County. I know it's time-consuming and it's very much appreciated by the citizens of Harden County and us, so thank you for all the work that you do do.
Well, and I want to lift up, too, the Harden County Community Endowment Foundation has, is going to be the sponsor for the Harden County Performing Arts. They have a, their Guitars on Fire is next Thursday, the fourteenth. So if you could come back to Eldor for that, that would be wonderful. Then you get to hear me talk again. Not very long, though.
All's in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That motion carries. And we can sure get a picture quick.
Great, thank you. Where do you want us, guys?
Right back there, it's good.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can borrow one from Justin.
Okay, okay. All right, because you're going to put one in there for me, right? Okay, okay. I'm going to just have that, my picture everywhere. Where should we go? Us girls?
Yep.
Kind of in between here.
In the front. You're tall.
You're tall, too.
Lance, move that way just a tad. There we go. Here we go, on three. One, two, three.
One more.
One, two, three.
Good.
All right.
Thanks, Justin.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
On to our next item. Item seven. Cindy Goodner is here on Rails to Trails Project. Hi, Cindy.
Thanks for having me back again.
We passed this, I guess to bring everyone up to speed, we've had a meeting with our county attorney, that Cindy and Chris were down, too, and the three supervisors, and we've made some changes to the document, back and forth. I see it was going back and forth in email a few times, and so Cindy, I'll just let you take it from there.
Sure, sure. Another update that I wanted to say today was the fact that the salvage has been delayed a bit, and that will be finished in June of 2014. So we can still take ownership locally, but we will not be liable for the trail until next summer. So that is an important change. But that, we can still go forward with this resolution and with the Iowa State Rec Trails grant. So the resolution that's in front of you today is, has the revisions that we talked about in our meeting two weeks ago, and also a few more grammatical errors that were caught late yesterday. So this basically states that the county would own the trail and a county trails commission would be appointed by the county to help manage the trail, fundraise for the trail, plan the trail. Do we have any final questions about the resolution this morning?
Lance or Ron, or anybody in the room?
Does. Do we have to have an appointed, do we have to have these people appointed before we turn around and accept the resolution?
I believe that during our meeting, we agreed that we could go ahead with the resolution, and after the resolution is agreed upon, then at that point, we could move forward with building our commission list and developing bylaws for that commission and moving forward with that.
Because the commission could start to go and get other grants and start doing that work, even though that we don't have ownership or can't take ownership of the trail as far as doing anything on the trail.
Well, that's not necessarily true. I think that we can do some things on the trail, like post-signage, to say that the trail is closed and to put up some things to keep people off of the trail. I think we can still go forward with our volunteer efforts that way. Just, I know that the biggest piece is liability-wise, that will be back on Iowa River Railroad until the salvage project is complete.
Okay.
But Harden County would be the, hopefully be the owner of the trail.
Could we start working on the bridges at that time, too? Or would that have to wait till June?
It was my understanding that we could go ahead and get started on some stabilization efforts. I think one of the most important things that we'll need to do is to have an engineer to come and evaluate the trail, to make a priority list of what needs to be addressed first, and what is safe to do with volunteers and what needs to be done otherwise, so.
And that would be shared with Marshalltown, and they'd look at the twenty-six miles or thirty-three mile stretches? We've got twenty-two. What do they have?
We have twelve.
Twelve?
Yeah.
One question on, in the meetings, records, quarterly reports. In appointing individuals to the commission, I'm not sure if it says anywhere, it talks about hold office for a calendar year, so there's not going to be a, it's going to be a year term then for everybody? I'm trying to understand that's, number one, everybody has a year term? Can we reappoint?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we'd be able to reappoint after a year, the same person?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so.
And we were wondering, just the verbiage, we were trying to figure it out.
Well, and I think a lot of those things can be re, not every single detail addressing the commission is outlined in this resolution, and we can develop that in the bylaws of the commission.
Yeah, I just, I was having a hard time understanding, number one, with, so, and we probably want to adjust that with the bylaws as maybe making alternate terms somehow. It'd be crazy.
Alternate turnover.
Yeah, it'd be crazy having to reelect a whole board every year or every so often, so.
Also have people that want to serve on the board, and then something will come up in their lives and they'll not be able to serve, or maybe they'll move away or something, and we need the fluctuation, be able to replace them with other people, so. Setting up something new is, you have to think long-term, because this would be a project that just keeps going on and on, won't get done in a year or two, so. It'll take a lot of effort from the community and the board to lead that, so. Randy, do you have any questions or concerns as we sit here with the final draft?
Well, first of all, I would just state the interpretation that I would have of that paragraph one is that that yearly term of office applies to the officers who would be appointed in according to that paragraph by the commission members. So I would say that that is governing and setting the term of office for the Chair, Secretary of the Commission.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I think the way that is written.
All right.
That would make sense.
And I think the board will need to determine, or the commission would need to determine. The board, of course, has the power to appoint the commission members, but I think either could potentially set the term of the commission members themselves and whether they be staggered or say run one, two, three years, however it would be, I mean with respect to that.
Could or actually should be done in the bylaws, then?
Well, one way or another, I mean, it should, either by action of this board or by the action of the commission itself. Okay?
Okay.
And then I would just have a question of Cindy, I know I wasn't certain in regard to an email address that I sent a copy with some revisions with regard to this agreement. It looked to be the general email address for the trails, okay? So I didn't know if, whether you got that.
No, I did not receive that.
Okay, okay.
And I do, but I'm the one that receives the trail. I'm the recipient of the Harden County Trails email address, so I'm not sure.
Because I didn't know whether, basically, the revisions that you were talking about being made last minute.
Those are referring to grammatical errors that were caught by the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation.
Okay.
So if there, I mean, if there, I would be, as far as action this morning, if it would be possible to approve pending on the changes that were suggested that I did not receive, and I can pass along my email address to you again this morning, so we can be certain that that's correct.
Yeah, because I did not know. I know, one, that was probably one of the most substantive, I mean, so to speak, which was brought up, would have been, again, in the meetings, records, quarterly report, paragraph six, and maybe it was, done at a later time, but I know there was discussion at the meeting that we had that there would be quarterly reports to the county, so I had put in there.
Oh, then that needs to, right, let me see it.
Instead of yearly, quarterly?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, there were two. It was the commission should quarterly make a full and complete report to the county, and then it goes on for the preceding quarter. So the last word in that first sentence was also quarter.
Okay.
And then I, I know on page five, I don't know on a resolution that it wouldn't necessarily need to be attested to by the reporter, Barb Nos, because I don't think this would necessarily be recorded as a resolution. So I had just substituted and put Jessica Laura as a Harden County auditor. And, I mean, truthfully regarding to this, Cindy, it might be easiest if I just hand this to you instead of going ahead. There's just, like I said, there's, I mean, there's just minor, like one word or one item type changes on pages two, three, and five.
Okay.
Correct? If that would work?
Yeah, that's just fine.
Randy, nothing in the changes changed the meaning or the, kind of the whole contract or resolution, it's just little words like that?
Well, I mean, like that quarterly, I think makes a, makes a difference. And then there was, there was one other that had, I think, I mean, it has at least somewhat of a significant change. I mean, that was discussed, and it would be page number two, I believe, and at least on mine, Cindy, I think I've got the right page. It has in regard to the termination aspect, and that was discussed, I believe, at the meeting where it was basically the board's power to terminate a commission it's created, as opposed to it being a joint, that there needs to be a joint agreement between the board and the commission in regard to a termination. So I think what I did, if I remember correctly, is I think I may have deleted out the first sentence in its entirety, and then started the second sentence with words "upon termination", and then that being provided for what would happen upon termination of the commission.
Yeah.
Is that, is that reflected?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Well, that's not reflected on the copy that's in front of the supervisors today.
No, but I mean the one that I handed you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a contract from the railroad stating that they're leasing it back? Or is it just verbal?
We, I can check with the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation, since they're the owner today, they would be the one that would have that. The only, the information that I have is what I had forwarded to you two weeks ago.
Yeah, and that was the one where she was going to get a contract made up?
Right, and I haven't heard since.
And we haven't got one made up yet. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from anyone in the room at the, this time? I guess I'll turn to the board members then and see where we are at concerning this resolution that we have in front of us at this point. And then also the next one will be the DOT one, agreeing with the Iowa DOT on the trail. So I don't think we have any concerns or questions over that one. I think that was pretty self.
It is what it is.
It is what it is, yeah. We're not going to make any changes about it.
I would like the contract, I guess, from the railroad. That way we know they have the liability insurance as well. Without the contract, we really don't, it's all verbal. That's my feelings. I don't like pushing it back another week again, but.
Yeah, that would have been good to know before today.
I thought we brought that up.
Well, I don't, that wasn't in my notes. And I can absolutely check on that today, or I could step out and check this morning. Either way, the, I mean, the county will have to take ownership, you know, sometime. We've talked before about the need to have local ownership to receive this grant funding, and we've talked about that's time-sensitive table, so by pushing it back another week, waiting for a contract, I'm, I'm not sure if that's something that needs to be done, but, you know, I'll leave that up to you.
Next meeting would be November, November thirteenth would be our next meeting, and I know there was a.
Fifteenth is the deadline.
Fifteenth was the, started to get pushing it pretty, pretty hard.
Jessica, there's a process you have to go through to, to receive.
Not to receive, but to expend.
To expand, yeah, to spend.
And.
I was, receive and spend, but you have to spend.
I cannot, I cannot pay the Natural Heritage Foundation the money until you approve and have the public hearing for the amendment. And with publication deadlines, the way that they are in our three legal newspapers, you're looking at rushing it probably twenty days. I can try and look at the calendar and see if I can get it published. The one that catches us most often that coordinates with your Wednesday meetings is the Act of the World Journal, because they only publish on Wednesday, and their deadline is the Thursday prior. So I'll need to look if I can make your public hearing on a day other than your Wednesday meeting. I might be able to shorten that timeframe and just get it published, but I have a ten and twenty window that I have to publish within, not less than ten and not more than twenty. So it's going to take a little bit of time to meet that legal requirement before I'm able to write that check.
So twenty.
I can receive funds all you want, but I can't write checks until I have the authority to do so.
So twenty days from now puts us to the end of November, basically?
That's a rush, yes.
Yeah.
And I, I think it could be done.
Mm-hmm.
But you may, you may have to have your hearing for the amendment on a day other than Wednesday.
Is it twenty-six? I'm looking at the calendar, yeah.
Were there no legal hearings or anything we'd have to do to set this commission up at all, were there?
I don't believe you need any type of public hearing there.
Okay.
You're talking about a budget amendment?
Yes.
Or you're not, regarding to the funds coming in and the new project?
If I had that kind of money that I could rearrange, I would just have you do a reappraisal of the money, but that, we're talking a larger sum of money than I can move, so either way you have to do an amendment. And I said that a couple weeks ago, but we weren't sure we were going forward yet, finally, so I just left it on the table for you and knew I'd revisit it again.
Okay.
And that's to send the money back out. We can accept it, if we can go forward.
You can accept the grant. I just can't pay Natural Heritage Foundation their money until you have the hearing, the budget hearing.
Right.
The budget amendment hearing, I'm sorry.
And I believe Natural Heritage, Heritage Foundation was okay with being a little bit.
They weren't panicked, and it didn't seem like they were holding any one to that November fifteenth deadline.
Right.
They said for the good, they were just excited that progress was being made, and for the good of the project, they said that a couple of weeks was not going to be a date to break it.
That's how I understood it, too, yeah.
I, you need to set the public hearing date, though, in order for me to go forward, and I don't know with your agenda today if you can set that date without having it on your agenda, or if you need to have the date set on the next agenda.
Okay.
That's kind of the issue that I brought to you last time. Unfortunately, after the meeting closed, I visited with you, and so it's not necessarily on record, but yeah, I need to have the date set, then I can send the publications to the newspaper.
And again, I don't think, as of today, visiting with Natural Heritage, that's before the end of November, the first of December, I don't think it's going to be a big deal with them. I think the important issue today is that, is the county going to move forward with it, or table it, or not do it at all? I think that's what's hanging out there right now. That needs to be decided amongst the supervisors. So that's, I guess, kind of where I'm at as far as being comfortable with the resolution that's in front of us. And then Lance, you mentioned the railroad contract, and then whether this is something we want for Harden County. I think that's, that's where we're at, so. Entertain a motion or more, more talk, or wherever you want to leave this.
Well, if we take the motion, we have to turn around and have liability on it until the contract's signed, where they have the liability on the insurance. And even if they don't sign the contract, we're fine, because we could scrap out the material ourself for the difference, but, but that was my question with the contract is, they would take the liability at the same time, when without one, you don't have the other, which would in turn put the liability right on us right away. We'd have to insure it instead of them.
Lance, I'm, I'm going to state, I don't think liability would attach in regard to passing this resolution. I don't think liability is going to attach until you actually purchase the property.
Okay.
And I mean, you're not doing that by virtue of this resolution. I mean, you are basically setting up a commission. Now, let's put it this way, if you don't have the purchase of the property, you've set up a commission that isn't going to do anything, okay? I mean, with respect to that, but at least just specifically that liability question, you're, you're not going to, that's not going to attach until the county becomes the owner of the property.
So that'll say Heritage Foundations until?
Until it's purchased. And I'm assuming that the actual purchaser closing on that is not going to take place, and you're going to have the actual transfer of that property until Jessica can write the check over for the purchase price. And that is traditionally, when it comes to land aspect, when then you become liable for anything that should happen upon that land, or potentially liable with respect to it. So I mean, just in regard to that liability issue, I don't think you have a problem with going forward with the resolution. I mean, you are definitely taking a step forward, and, I mean, you're.
Committing.
Yeah, well, yeah, you are, you are putting some commitment with regard to it. You're not putting, I mean, you're not necessarily putting the dollars to it as of yet, until that budget would be amended, the funds would be received from the state of Iowa, and then you would have a resolution with regard to paying that amount, purchasing that property, basically accepting the deed to the trail property.
Okay.
So I mean, you can have many different steps, I mean, with respect to this, and they're each somewhat different and do certain things. I mean, this resolution is, you have committed to set up a commission to oversee on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, the, the management of this trail. Now, if the trail never comes about, like I said, I mean, you've taken some action, made some commitments that weren't necessary, okay, and perhaps a little bit, might have been a little bit of a waste of time type situation, but you have not incurred liability, you have not expended funds.
That sounds a lot better.
I mean, there is nothing in this resolution, there is nothing in regard to this resolution purchasing that land or authorizing the, authorizing the expenditure of funds specifically.
What about the agreement with the DOT then, Randy? On the next one?
They're basically, again, you're actually taking more of a step financially with regard to that. You are agreeing that you are going to receive these funds and that you are going to go ahead with this project. If you fail to do so, there's going to be repercussions there, the biggest of which is returning the funds. Now, I'm not going to sit here totally, that, that there could be some other potential, but the biggest ramifications anywhere with regard to a breach of this agreement with the DOT is you return the grant funds, okay, with respect to that.
Which I think could have a, a big impact on future fundraising.
Which I think could have a, a big impact on future fundraising opportunities. You know, this was, this project was the number one recommended project for the State Ret trails program. And that is a hugely, hugely competitive funding source and funding program. And you know, I personally think we're ready to move forward. We need to buy this land. We need to secure it for future recreational use and now's the time. The funding is sitting there waiting.
How do we work, how do we work in here with Marshalltown because it is a stretch, stretch between Marshalltown and through Hardin County? So they're ready to purchase, right?
Yeah.
And just waiting for us to sign on, correct?
Well, I'm not sure we have to work with Marshalltown at all. I mean, the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation is the owner today. They will sell one section to the city of Marshalltown, the other section to Hardin County.
The meeting that we had in Marshalltown, if we don't go forth with actions soon, they're just going to let the land go back to landowners?
No. The, the, you mean in, in Hardin County or Marshall County?
Hardin County.
Well, you were asking, at that meeting, I remember specifically, you were asking Andrea, what if scenarios?
Right.
And she said one of the possibilities would be to lose the, the grant funding to, and Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation is not able to own this for 20 years. So one option would be to lose the trail, sell it off in sections.
My other question is with the leasing back to the railroad, once, if the section is purchased, we're saying that we're passing liability back to the salvage and to the, but we're still talking that we have to put up the signs?
Well, I'm not sure we have to.
Well, that's what's been said a couple of times, so I was not sure that we'd have to do.
I think from a volunteer standpoint, that that would be a proactive, good thing to do for the commission to do. I, I don't think that we are required to do-
And would we be, we'd be ready to do that if, whether we're required or not? Do we have the finances to be able to purchase signs and?
I've had two calls this week, I have people that want to donate money to this project before the end of the year. Yeah, we have money.
Okay.
Just need a place to put it.
I'm fine with the resolution after the definition of what Randy gave me, so for going forward with that resolution, I can make the motion to approve the resolution establishing a Hardin County Trails Commission.
I'll second that.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the resolution of establishing, establishing the Hardin County Trails Commission. Is there any further discussion on that?
I just, one thing with the, is it okay with three of you to, for me to make the corrections that were recommended that I just received? Is it okay to go ahead and approve the resolution and then I'll submit a final copy with these corrections to you later this morning for the, for the official copy?
Yeah, should I have been?
Yeah, I should have had that in the motion.
In the motion?
If I need to make a motion and then-
You're going to adopt that resolution as written. So it's, it's good.
Okay. So as Cindy has pointed out, the motion is for the changes that will be made and then we will sign on to that. Any other questions or concerns? If not, that's roll call vote.
Can I ask?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye. That motion carries, the resolution will be assigned when, when the changes are made and we will get that ball rolling to establish that committee. Next item of business on the agenda is the DOT agreement. We have an agreement with the Iowa DOT on the grant. I will open the floor on motions or visiting about that.
I got a lot more questions on this, some I've asked already. With this grant, there's that extra $75,000 and we don't know how that's going to be distributed, who's going to be in control of that $75,000, which commission board, a super commission, they said some of that money will be used for engineer work, but I need a little more.
So there's $75,000 above the land acquisition cost as Lance said, that will be used for bridge stabilization, trail stabilization in general. The conversations that we have had have stated that the super committee, which consists of both Hardin County representatives and Marshalltown representatives, will work with the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation to have an engineer evaluate the project, make an itemized list of what needs to be addressed first. And that $75,000 will be spent just top down, first priorities from a safety standpoint.
From the engineer's report?
Yes.
And the engineer gets hired by the super committee?
We can have that, yeah, we can have. I mean, I don't think that we would have the power to hire them, but we can get recommendations from the Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation and decide what the super committee thinks is the best. And then the super committee will go back to both the city of Marshalltown and Hardin County for final approval.
Do you think there's a chance that an engineer would absorb all $75,000 of this?
That could happen. I know that in past conversations, we've had, talked about a per bridge estimate. We were led to believe that it wouldn't be that much, but with my personal experience with trails development, I will fall, sometimes engineering does eat up a lot of funding quickly, so.
I, I like the idea of projects can change year by year, however you decide. Why engineer it today and two years down the road? We just wasted all that engineer work because we changed our ideas. Why not engineer, engineer as we go instead of having it all engineered right up front? Just do it piece by piece.
And when I say engineer, I'm not talking final trail engineering, I'm talking just to come in and say, to take a look at the existing structures.
And to get a third party point of view because right now Marshalltown has their point of view of what they would like to proceed with and we haven't had a time, a moment to really think about our procession of what-
We don't have a commission in place.
We don't have a commission in place.
But when I, when I say bridge stabilization, you know, in my mind, I'm seeing the trail as is and how can we stabilize this and safely have it open to the public as soon as possible?
I think we have to, unless the, how other trails in the state in the past have been built, if you really talk to some people, I think in, in the stages that we are in right now, you can get into a little bit of a, I don't want to call it cat fight, but you're going to do mine first, you're going to do, you know, when you have different cities, different counties all working, let's do this section first. But you have to keep in mind the big picture, we want the whole trail opened. And I really do think we need a third party in here with some expertise to look at the whole trail to see if we have, you know, we've all been out on it, Ron was just out on it Friday, and we all think we're engineers, but we're really not. And to get that third party view of what, is there something in this trail that's really going to be a bottleneck? And so I do like the idea of prioritizing through the whole trail, what needs to be fixed first, what needs to be fixed second, and what level do we need to hit so we can at least get it open? Like you mentioned Cindy, so we don't have to have closed signs on it to walking to snowmobiles to that type of situation, so.
We're really, really fortunate that we got that extra $75,000. You know, this, that was a bonus. That was kind of a, that was extra.
If the engineer eats that up, then, I know we, we all try and shy away from engineers, but they, they get a degree for a reason.
Yeah.
And their expertise is, is needed, I think, for the safety of the public. So if, you know, if it uses, and I understand your point Lance, why not do a little bit in case it changes, but then you wouldn't be able to open the whole trail up. I think it's important for walking, maybe not so much, but if, if snowmobile is, are in the future of this, if that's what that committee decides, you know, it doesn't take long to run down 27, 26 miles. So we really want the trail safe through the whole stretch, so.
Right. And I've said before that we have funding from the snowmobile clubs, volunteers ready to go, materials ready to go. We're ready.
Well, even if we weren't able to open the whole trail up at one time, an engineer would decide-
Yeah.
-what parts-
Right.
And recommendations on how best to perform it. Right.
Gentlemen, if I may, I got notified I got an emergency going on that I need to attend to. But if you do, if you do end up approving the agreement with the DOT, I've prepared a short resolution for that purpose. It basically approves it, authorizes the chairman to go ahead and sign. The extra copy is for the auditor's office, right there.
Okay.
And, I mean, if anything does come up, I'll just be over in the office, but there was just law enforcement matter that I needed to attend to.
Sounds good. Thanks Randy for all your help. All right. Randy just handed us a resolution on the agreement that we could go ahead with, so. Any other questions or concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion on this.
Is there any other things that are going to pop up out of the gate on us? Again, we're not taking ownership until Heritage Foundation. One of the things that's going to concern me is all of a sudden we take ownership and they say build fences. It's been brought up to me quite a few times by the adjacent landowners. And I bring it up quite a few times and I know one of the answers was that we can do it as funds are available. That's why I ask about the $75,000.
We address safety and safety needs will take priority. Right.
But with the fundraising also, that has been, that this commission's going to create the fundraising, if we have to build fence, that money would be appropriated that way?
Yeah. The commission has agreed to do all the fundraising for the project.
These are just the questions I ask because they're asked me and I just like to double check.
And I think in that case too, the trail just, if we had, if we had a spot, whether it be fencing or a bridge, that, that needs to be handled, then the trail just wouldn't be open until, I mean, that would push up to the top priority as far as what, whatever the, the commission has set for top priorities. So if your landowner would want some fencing along there for one way or the other, you would have to go, I would understand that you'd go to the commission and say, okay, Ron, we need fencing along here. And they would put that on their list of priorities of how high up and down is that going to be? It's hard for us to sit here today and say where that's going to fall in, but, but definitely be looked at.
Yeah.
Well, I've asked all the questions along the trails and at Marshalltown. I'm, I'm waiting for you guys to make a decision.
I just need a motion.
Well, the other thing you brought up, even though that we take the motion to accept this, if it's not moving forward, we can also don't have to accept it afterwards. It'd be bad for the trail, don't get me wrong, but if any new, new things come up.
I think you have, as a supervisor of the county, you have to, you have to decide, is this something you're going to do? Because it seems like we're going along here and we're just looking for back doors to get out of it, either we're going to do this or we're not. Unless something major comes up, you know, I, I see this as a big advantage to Hardin County to have this trail as a trail form or to keep it together as even a rail bed because that's one thing that really hooked me was if something happens here in Eldora or in southern Hardin County, that a major industry and they need that rail line, it can go back to that rail line. And that's really hard to do once that rail line is gone. So to me, it just does two things. If we can't use it for industry, we can use it as a recreation. I think it'll attract a lot of people to the county, plus I think it really benefits the people of the county as far as being able to use that trail. Working out or going out to other trails and talking to local people there, they, I've talked to a lot of people on trails that were against it when they first were built and now are out there walking or, or riding or doing something and they just love it. So it's, it's been a positive in other states or, or other part of the state. So I guess from my aspect of it, I think this is a really good project going forward in the state. Like Cindy had mentioned, it's a number one priority for the state. And when you have that backing, you know that there's other people in the state wanting this to happen too. So that's, that's why I'm at on it, so I just need-
It's, we're really lucky, this is best case scenario that we're presented with grant money this early in the game. We can inherit this land, for, I know that free maybe isn't the correct word, but we're getting, we don't have to fundraise for land acquisition. This grant takes care of that. We can start with stabilization and development. This is best case scenario. We don't want to miss this opportunity.
Oh, I think, I think it's a, I think it's a great thing to be able to do this for every reason you said there. I just want to make sure that we aren't missing anything in the process of it. And that's why I've been lary going through with the questions I ask and I, I know I repeat myself a lot.
Well, and questions are great, but I, I don't think that you need to be fearful or hesitate by, by accepting this grant funding. I think that we can address things as we go.
That's the part I think we do need to be fearful of.
I don't, but I think that we've covered all the big, you know, the big red flags.
That's where I'm getting at, that's why we keep bringing them back up, the flags.
Yeah.
And that's why I am fearful because once, once we agree to this, we're in.
Yeah.
This is the last step.
Yeah, we are in. Hopefully, we will be in.
That, that's the fearful part, just to make sure we've done everything.
Yeah.
And that's what I keep asking a lot of questions and I know, like I say, I repeat myself a lot. Moving forward though, I'll make the motion of approving the Department of Transportation agreement for a state recreational trails project.
Second.
Thank you Lance for taking the lead and making that motion.
Just need to, I'll show this a major commitment, second all three of those on board.
Yeah.
So then we're all comfortable.
There's a lot of concerns and, and questions and I think we all, like Cindy mentioned, it's almost a gift. We want to make sure it's a gift that keeps on giving, not a gift that keeps on taking. And, because I think in government, we've seen, you know, over a lifetime of things that were very upfront and then really turns into something bad. And I think that's what we're trying to prevent is something that the county really wants and, and can use. So any other questions at this point?
Yeah, we were going to have a meeting this afternoon, which I thought was going to be a very important meeting. And is it rescheduled now or?
Yes.
Are we still trying to?
Yes. Actually, we're looking at dates in early December to reschedule, so we'll be rescheduled fairly soon.
For information for us, that was a, I thought, a crucial meeting to help us, help guide us to our next step.
I was disappointed as well.
I was too.
Yeah.
Looked like a lot of people couldn't make it this week, so they canceled it.
The presenters, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks Cindy.
With that, I will, it is a roll call vote because it is a resolution.
Lance?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye. With that, it does pass unanimously. Thank you Cindy for-
Thank you.
-doing all this hard work and labor to get us to this point. I wish we could say we read the, the hardest part was done, but I think there's going to be a lot of things coming at us and forward to get this trail to where the commission wants it to be. And that's going to take years and maybe different, even more supervisors and, you know, it's just trails through the state, they're just always changing, always updating and always getting better. So it's just, it's a lot like conservation board, I mean, just looking for new things and new ways, so.
This is a great first step.
I appreciate it. I appreciate you getting off to that first step and off to a good start, so thank you. And with that, that was item nine. We will move on to item 10, which is ineligible homestead and military credits to be disallowed for 2014 payable 2015 and 16.
I'll make a motion to approve the ineligible homestead military credits.
Thanks, guys.
Yep, thanks. To be disallowed for 2014.
Second.
So I move to second. Any further discussion on that? If not, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, appointment of county deputy medical examiner. I can't think of the doctor's name. Brunkhorst. Brunkhorst has contacted us and he would like an assistant medical examiner because he is not in the county all the time and would like to have someone be here. He has recommended...
Curtis O'Laughlin.
O'Laughlin, yep. Curtis O'Laughlin, Dr. Curtis O'Laughlin, and I believe he's out of Iowa Falls, to be his assistant medical examiner, so I guess that's pretty self-explanatory. If that works for everyone, I don't see a downside to that, I guess, so...
I'll move to appoint Dr. Curtis O'Laughlin for an assistant medical examiner and to have Nancy send a letter to Dr. Brunkhorst acknowledging that.
I'll second.
So I move to second. Any further discussion on that? If not, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and would like to thank him for stepping up and wanting to do that for Hardin County, so that is a big help. Item 11 is utility permits and secondary votes department. Daryl, do you have any utility permits today?
None today.
None today? All right. Anything else out there?
Keeping the snow away.
Keeping the snow away.
Those burners work outside of town, do they?
Let me know how that goes for you. Anything else, Daryl, that you need right now? All right. That would be item 12. Item 13, any other business in the room?
Do you want a hospital update?
Sure.
I know you normally get Shannon, but she sent me. Just so you know, the South Drive was poured last week. They did end up pulling up a little bit of concrete out front just from some quality control issues, so that will go back in. So pretty much all the concrete outside is poured, which was a goal before snow flies, so they're able to get that done. This Friday, we're excited, the emergency services department will be outrunning real case scenarios through their department. They're that far along that they'll be able to make sure if there's still little tweaks they need, they'll be able to make those changes. So they have scenarios that they'll be running on with both shifts on Friday and Saturday. We're still on schedule for move in March, which is exciting, other than we counted the days and we realized we're under 100 workdays for all of the move to happen, so finishing touches. I know you were out on the tour with us a couple of weeks ago and some of the patient rooms are already getting the lights hung and all of those pieces, so it's exciting. Thank you for your support. Any questions?
No, can't believe this.
What sections were replaced for this, Matt?
Just some of the parking areas up front. There was some crap, just on the ground, parking. There were some cracks in them that they reassured us would be fine, but Sue McDowell said fine isn't good enough at this point, so they just went back in and pulled up a couple of sections and redid them. So we're happy to have her on site most of the time.
Thanks for the tour.
No problem, thanks for coming. And if somebody else, if you wanted tours and weren't able to attend, let us know because we're out there. Somebody's out there at all times at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That concrete's going to good use. It's in a riprap pile.
There you go.
Oh. Any other business? I guess I'd also like to congratulate anyone that won any election last night or for all those people that put their neck out there and ran for an office. We do appreciate people stepping up and doing that type of stuff, so congratulations to them. And with that, take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So I move to second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone, for coming.